Okay, is there any open public comment?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any guests?
Good stuff.
A resident on William Street found a purse and a wallet from the car break-ins thrown in the ditch and turned it over to the sheriff. He was right on it, so hopefully that will slow down.
Hey, and I think the town had a flurry of actions the last couple of weeks with baseball, softball, graduation in prom, so everything seemed to be a great success for all those students.
You're very low in volume, Judy.
Oh.
That's better.
Alright, sorry. I think I'll stay home next. Anything else for good stuff?
I'd say we had a successful Memorial Day parade. I mean, it was short and sweet, but everyone seemed to have a good time and it was certainly a nice gathering of people in the park, I thought.
It was great. I forgot that we had already lapsed from that time to this time, so I feel like there's been so much going on in the last two weeks.
Well, and let's acknowledge we hit eighty percent, so here we are.
Yes.
Yes, very good stuff, so we can hopefully meet in person.
Exactly. Starting when?
Next meeting.
You'll have to meet in person.
Yeah, yeah, we do. But, I mean, we don't have to, we don't have to do remote.
The state emergency has been revoked, so.
So as tomorrow at twelve oh one, the, uh, all the open meeting law exceptions are gone. You have to abide by the open meeting law.
Right, but what I mean, you don't have to have remote as well, so that's a plus.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go into the highway department. North Street Bridge update.
And you gotta get closer to the computer.
Okay, I think I included your packet, the news release put out by V-Trans with the October fifteenth opening date, which is the big issue that they're by, but, you know, what I have told them is based on our previous conversations, is do what you have to do to get it done. And so they're essentially closing it, uh, every, every week this week in order to get it out of there, get that big rig gone. But other than that, I've heard nothing from them.
Do you have any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay. The Beaver Pond Shared Use Path cost a date, which is included in the packet.
spreadsheet. This is a spreadsheet which is developed by V-Trans to track their dollars, but I use it because it has the information on it that we need. If you look at the column at the bottom.
Stan, Stan.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear me?
No.
And you've literally gotta face the computer. Once you do, we can hear you. Once you move your head away, we can't.
Okay, on that spreadsheet that you have in front of you, you'll notice that the line for the seventy-four thousand five hundred dollars for contaminated material is not going to be a V-Trans eligible item. The last number, three numbers below there is the total estimated local share, which is a hundred and eighty-three thousand. To date, you have spent fifteen thousand and the balance is the one sixty-eight. So the seventy-four thousand five hundred is the big issue. Uh, we are talking with the hazardous waste division as to whether there is grant funds available to remove contaminated material. Uh, other than that, this is what, you know, this is what the estimated local share will be. Uh, they are trying to refine the contaminated material. Uh, the current contract with BHB includes, uh, a some environmental assessment of what is there as a so-called Phase Two. So, uh, this is, this is where we're at. We're continuing to work on that portion of it as to what the cost to remove the contaminated material and whether there is other funds available to help pay for that.
Good.
So, does anybody else have any questions about regarding that? I mean, do we wait to see if there's grants available and then make a decision? If we wanna go forward with the additional seventy-five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm, what, we're, basically what we actually put in for and said we'd support was about, what, a hundred thousand? Hundred and twenty thousand.
Hundred and twenty-four.
So this will be seventy-five almost over that.
Yeah. The application was a local share of a hundred and twenty thousand. The actual construction cost for the basic project has been reduced for a couple of reasons. One is getting away from some ledge along Proctor Gas, uh, and the other is shortening the, uh, easterly end of it and realigning it so it doesn't go quite as far. So there is a, the estimated construction cost of the original project is less than it was when we submitted the application. The big thing is the contaminated material, which again is a hundred percent local share.
I make a motion, we wait on, uh, get the, uh, see if we're funded for the hazardous waste and then make a decision.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. Okay, next is the traffic and parking ordinance.
Okay, I followed up on our last meeting and removed Park Street from the ordinance and added Kane Street to the ordinance. So those were the two others. Uh, attached to the parking ordinance is the discussion from the planning commission regarding the project. And, uh, I might ask if Tom can go through the items that are there.
Uh, yes, I thought Mr. Horner was gonna be here tonight, but, uh, uh, we reduced it even more. Um, but certainly it's up to the select board to approve.
I think if, if you look at the suggestions that are from the planning commission, they're looking at a pa- parking ban from two thirty to three thirty during school days.
Uh, yes.
And essentially that's, again, nowhere.
Basically all around the schools, yes.
Yeah. Again, from two thirty to three thirty. And the other one was they suggested that you take the East Street and extend it down to Patch Street on the Northern Patch Street intersection, which I don't think is any problem there.
No, that's probably just as well.
Yeah. Yeah, that takes in that corner there.
Yeah.
Yes.
So was everybody good with the changes made from the last meeting to this article? Seven of the ordinance?
I am. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So what are you approving from the last meeting? Planning Commission changes, what are you approving?
I think we're approving the changes that were made from the last meeting and we've referenced Park Street and, um, E- Kane Street.
I believe East Street wasn't in there before either, too.
Right, well, we talked, yeah, we talked about East Street, I think it was changed, right, to make it different. Um, and then I believe the additional, um, no parking on School Street and Park Street was an addition, right, from the commission, planning commission? So were you accept that motion also includes those changes?
Accept it.
Okay.
So now you're including no parking on a what, on School Street? So are you incorporating? That's my question. Are you incorporating these changes and last week's? I, I, I'm not sure what the motion is.
I, I believe these were suggestions from the planning commission. I thought we were approving, uh, page one here. The new article five, seven, six, seven.
Right. And if from the looks of it, it looks like the, um, the changes from the planning commission or the recommendations are just verbiage that's supposed to be added into the original section. So like Section one A, A is gonna include that no parking on School Street, School Days, two thirty to three thirty. Am I reading that correctly?
Um, yeah, that's, that's, so are you gonna eliminate, uh, the page one version of that that has no parking at any time?
Well, it kinda wouldn't make sense, right, if there's no parking anytime?
Correct.
Was the planning commission saying, instead of that, say no parking just between two thirty, three thirty?
Yes.
For High Street, Main Street.
That, that, that doesn't cover the morning, which worried me.
No, no, okay, now I see what you're saying here.
No.
Lisa?
So I, I'm sorry, but that's contradictory to what last time was. One is parking on sidewalks, one is no parking, period. So are you saying now there's no parking on Park Street? I mean, because that was something we, that you talked about last meeting. That was something that had been taken out of this, like in October, and now it seems like you're putting it back in. Uh, I'm confused.
I, I, if I remember, it was taken out, it was put in, taken out, and then this was supposed to put it back in where you could park on Park Street. Right? Didn't we all agree last time that we were gonna, we were able to park there?
Uh, yes, then wasn't there something about special events?
Yeah, during special events and games and everything. Right, not taken out. It was basically saying they couldn't do it was taken out, so they should be able to do it.
All of the current draft.
I can't hear you.
The current draft that you have in front of you is based on the minutes of the last meeting, which says Park Street, page five, Section one E is to be removed. I removed it. The next one was Kane Street, no parking, both sides to be added. I added it. Uh, William Street to the top of East Street, no parking to be added.
Okay. So I feel like the confusion is coming from the planning commission and what they wanted to add in. If we're saying, take it out, and they're saying between two thirty and three thirty, which, I, I mean, I don't know, I don't have kids in school, but isn't two thirty, three thirty a time where people are gonna park on that side, on Park?
Correct, and, and.
Pick up people, so why would you do, why would we remove that?
Well, they suggested, uh, changing it to, that's the only time there is no parking on these streets.
And, and I mean, just to clarify again, I think we have to remember our terms here. Standing and parking are two different things.
Right.
Stopped on the side of the street to pick up their kid, that's standing, not parking.
Okay, and excuse me, because they don't mention parks, it's only School Street, so that's.
Yeah, there's no park in here anywhere, or Park Street.
Right, okay.
This is just what the planning commission recommended.
Right. I'm all for that, especially if that's like when kids go to school and you don't want people, like, like we had issues a couple of years ago with people parking like up North Street, you know, where School Street comes down.
Yeah.
That created a lot of problems, so.
It did.
Lisa, does that make more sense?
Not really, because I think the issues are not on those streets. The issues were at the corner of North Street, the corner of, um, I, I mean, High Street makes sense, but where it says Section one A, where they suggest the parking ban, that doesn't delineate schools, that just says during school day.
Right, but, but for High Street.
I, I'm just asking, does that incorporate? Are we talking about the high school or are we just talking about the elementary school?
No, I think it, it refers back to Section, isn't that right, Section one?
One A, High Street.
High Street. Point three.
North Street, or sorry, north of the intersection, yeah, so it's elementary school.
Okay.
It re- revises, they've revised in one A.
Yep.
But once again, as Ben said, when you talk about your terms, parking and standing, if someone's on the side of, if someone's on School Street in their car to pick up their kid in line, that's not parking.
Right, that's, that, that would be standing.
To me, parking is when you park and you leave your vehicle and you're not.
Right.
Present. I mean, UPS guy can leave his vehicle, but he, you know, he's going back.
Yeah. I mean, the street is still all plugged up, whether you're parking or standing. The fire truck has a hard time getting through. When we got, uh.
But the idea is that the fire truck could get through because you're in your car and you can, if you see the lights behind you, in order to be standing, you have to be in the car. I know that doesn't make sense, but. But I, I mean, to me, this makes sense, because if you're gonna be picking up your kid, you pull over, you stop, you're in the car, your kid gets in, and you drive off.
Well, they're waiting in line to pull into the parking lot.
Right, but my point is that you're, you're in the car, in the driver's seat. The car is under your control at that point.
There's no way to avoid that.
No, but tha- that's my point is, that's standing, that's when you're, you're, you're waiting, ready to go.
Right. So does anybody want more clarification, or are we good with the way this is?
Is that gonna take care of the situation on North Street?
I guess the only question I ask is that the two thirty to three thirty, you're not accepting that recommendation.
I mean, what time does a elementary school get out?
So you want it all day, Stan, you know? Uh, uh, any school day?
Well, I, does the planning commission understand that no parking on School Street means, I mean, like, we'd want it so there's no, you, you're standing, you're basically waiting for your kids at that time to get out of school, so you've gotta be there. If you ban that one time and not let anybody go there, then that's kind of defeats the purpose of picking up your child at school, I think.
Uh, we didn't get into standing and parking.
So maybe we need to have in the ordinance definitions what standing is, what parking is, which I think it is. Okay, do you think that? I feel like in every other ordinance we do, we, we define vicious dog, we define biting, we define everything, and in this case, we define parking, we define standing, and I think that would clear up things. So there is no parking, meaning you cannot just leave your car and get out, you know, go walk to school to get your child and come back twenty minutes later, but you can stand on that street anytime to get your child. Does that make more sense?
That works for me.
What about morning? Drop off?
Same thing, I think.
I, I think we should make it all day instead of.
Right.
Because Wednesdays are early release and blah, 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 we have half-days.
So standing's allowed on that street, so they can drop kids off, pick kids up, but you can't park and leave your vehicle. Correct? Is that what we're looking for?
Let me just go back to when we first passed this. I think one of the issues was if somebody's having some sort of family event on a non-school day outside of the time of school, the question was, could they park their car on the street? You know, if so-and-so was having a birthday party, um, and it was on, um, Saturday, or if it was on a Tuesday during the summer, could they park on the street at that point? I think that was, if, at least as, as, as much as I remember, that was kind of the, the question was, how can we ban parking when the school is not in session? So that's the only thing I wanna throw out there.
And I think, in my opinion, like High Street, I think that's totally fine. You have an event, you can park on the sidewalk, you know, all the way down there, because you have that option. You don't have that option on School Street, because it's all curb. You know, you'd have to be up on the curb and parking on that narrow, I mean, there's no way you could park on either side or both sides, because it'd be just like Kane Street, you know? I, that's just what I think, because you have plenty of parking, you know, down the street, on North Street, up, you know, um, High Street and, and those areas. I don't see anything wrong with that, you know, parking from the north to the south on High Street.
I just wanna make sure, because I know that that was brought up when we first passed.
No, I, I, I think so too. I think that's a, a good point.
I think this needs a little more work.
Yeah. I think until we can see it in black and white again.
Yeah.
So, Stan, do you wanna take a stab at it, or do you want me to send Stan what I feel like is some clarification? I mean, I, before I do that, though, or we do that, what do you guys feel like? Do you think it's okay that they park on High Street? If there's an event at a family or something? We've always done that here. I mean, people always park on the side of the road.
As long as it's not a, a school day where, where, you know, you're gonna have the school traffic also.
Right, correct.
That, that's all right with me.
Bruce, how about you?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, if it was in, something in the evening or Saturday or something.
But not, but do you all still not want School Street ever parked on? I just feel like it'd be hard without taking up a whole lane.
Right, uh, School Street, um, they have the option to park in, in the school parking lot, uh, if they're having a family get-together. You know, I mean, it, it's, it's a short walk to almost any house on School Street where the, where the issue is.
Okay, so if we define parking versus standing, then there'll no, there'll be no parking on School Street ever?
Right.
Yeah. I mean, if you think about it, if, I mean, if you start parking on School Street and an emergency vehicle needs to get through, again, Judy, you're right, it'd be like Kane Street.
Yeah.
Right, because you, nobody's gonna pop, pop up on that curb and park on that sidewalk, you know? And if you park the other side, you're gonna eliminate a whole lane.
Yeah.
Or be parking on people's lawns again, so. All right, you want me to try to rewrite this and I can send it to you guys, and then I'll send it to you, Stan?
I, I, I'd feel better about it.
Yeah.
So we'll just put it to the next.
Yeah.
Able it to the next meeting?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Been this long.
It's another two weeks, right?
Yeah.
All right, what's that date? All right. Next. Okay. Uh, South Street Sidewalk Design Consultant.
Okay, you have a grant from V-Trans to replace the sidewalk on South Street between uh, Grove Street and the church. You have already selected a municipal project manager, which is Dubois and King. The next effort is to select a design engineer. Through the selection process, there needs to be a review committee to do it. I have asked Steve Fola and, uh, Dale Christie to serve on that committee, because they have served before. I might suggest either one or two select board members and maybe John Corliss to serve on the committee. Uh, and I would be in there as a overseer. If you only put one select board member, then I would probably, uh, add myself to the committee so that we had, uh, five people.
I would like to be on the committee.
Anybody else?
I'd be happy to do that, too.
Okay.
And Stan, we would like you there also.
That'd be an advisor.
Yeah.
But, I mean, some of you have been through this before, and what we will produce is a rating sheet. We'll give you their proposals and a rating sheet, and you go through and, and rate the, uh, various consultants, and we add them up and see who is the, the appropriate one, and then we start negotiating with them on fee and also with the scope of work, uh, as far as what they see versus what V-Trans see. And sometime within the next, uh, month, we'll be coming back to the select board with a recommendation for a design consult for the sidewalk. So it's a tedious procedure, it's a tedious, uh, form to review all of these proposals and try to say how many points you give this one, how many points you give that one. Uh, but we'll have a training session before you start in. Uh, get the rating sheets out to you, and, uh, you can go from there.
Okay, is there a mo- a motion to appoint a committee and have Ben and Tom as select board representatives on that committee?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else under highway? Okay, can I have a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So the delinquent.
Hey, I sent out a email and it got to people in time, but you talked about the first ten, and it's highlighted in there, uh, of the first ten, two of the houses are already shut off. Uh, Rogers and, uh, uh, Hummel. Those are already shut off.
And Hummels?
Hummel.
The last one, Hummels, number nine. Doesn't that say off East Street?
Yeah, that one is shut off.
Yeah.
Uh, of the remaining ones, of course, uh, Burgess is dead. Uh, that's on serious list of properties to go up for tax sale, because the taxes do as well as the water and sewer. So that would go for a tax sale sometime in July.
Has that water been turned off?
And the ones that need to be, have a curb stop installed are.
Uh, Stan. Burgess, have they been shut off? That house has been vacant for some time.
I, I don't know if physically the curb stop has been shut off. I will check, but I know they're not using any water. There's nobody there.
Yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, I, I, I'd feel better if somebody said, yes, the water was turned off. We got burned by this once before.
Okay, there are four that need to have curb stops installed. Clark Street Properties, Trombley. Trombley. Scott. Oh, and Dunbar. And there are three that have curb stops there, so.
And I see Trombley's, uh, apparently we can't do anything because of the bridge construction. It may be in such a spot that they can't
Yeah, right now we can't get to it.
Right.
It's on his li, the, the four are on his list to get done.
Yeah.
And Trombley is whenever he can get to it. So that's the status, and uh it's on John's work list to get these installed. Before we get to July, because what we're looking at is sending out delinquency letters in July to everybody who is delinquent, irregardless of whether they're on the plan or not on a plan right now. And give them the 30 days notice for shut offs, which would happen sometime in uh late August or September.
So Stan, with those three shut offs and the one we can't do, how many does that give us that we could shut off after we send out the notices?
Okay, there are other ones that John has got yes on down the sheet that I sent out. But it's uh a very few, and some of them we haven't verified. But if we look at the whole list, uh with, that are over a thousand dollars, that, that would be what we would be looking at sending out in July. Notifying that they will be shut off within 30 days if they don't come in and pay or make a new contract.
Okay, so
There are, there are some people who are honoring the contracts. Uh, and those we would note as a separate issue that are doing it, but a lot of people have just stopped doing it. There is one section, one home on West Street, which is owned by Ben Rogers and his sister. Uh, right now, his daughter is living in the building, and she is paying the current costs, but is not paying the uh overdue costs. Uh, that's one that Celia, that's, we could put up for auction. Uh, the only trouble is, is a good faith effort by the daughter who is actually living there and paying it. So that's something to be addressed as far as uh how severe or how strict we get with that particular site.
So let me just throw this out there, and, and I'm going to try and read Tom's mind right now. Can you get us a list of 10 people? So what, what I would love to see is 10 people who are behind that we could shut off after we sent out the notices, so that we can start with 10. Whether
Yep, we've got more than 10 people that we can shut off.
Okay, but the, the top 10, let's get whatever the top 10 that we can actually install curb stops at. So we could actually move forward with this.
Yeah. The goal would be to get curb stops on everybody, or find the curb stops if there, there is one there, but we can't, haven't found it.
Yeah, but what we keep bringing up is, let's focus on 10, because when we focus on everything, we lose focus.
And then, of course, we've got Lambert's there on Route 3, we still
I was alluding to was, can we, whatever the top 10 is?
Yeah.
If we can't get to some of them because of the North Street project or whatever, whatever our top 10 is, can we make sure that they are going to be set up with curb stops so that if after we send out the, the notices, they don't pay, we can shut them off?
Yeah.
The issue with Lambert is that is in Pittsburgh.
Right.
And we did not have a lien on the property, on the property, and the property has been sold.
Yeah.
So you may never get that one.
Yes, that's what I was leaning towards, yeah.
Okay, let's not lose focus on our top 10 though.
Well, no, no.
Okay, so basically, if we put the curb stops on those four, and then the other three, that's going to be seven. Unless there's holdups with those because of the construction. And then we just dip down further to the next layer, grab those.
Yes.
Alright.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think the, the issue is that letters will be sent out. All the ones that are on the sheet right now. Notify you that we will be shutting them off within 30 days.
Good.
Or they come in to make the, make an agreement, which is part of statute, so we have to provide that. Uh, which will get us back in practice again. And I think the idea of actually shutting some of them off will make believers out of the, the remaining of them.
Yeah.
Exactly, we're going to have a little bite to our bark here.
Okay, anything else on the delinquent accounts? Anything else in Water Commissioners?
Stan, has you or John had time to just give us two fire hydrants we could repair this summer? Off the bad ones?
We will put it on the list. The, the one is uh in Green Square and Carousel, which uh we need to improve some pipe on North Street in order to make that happen. And that's the one that's on the top of this list right now, because that would pick up both of those. The ones on Patch Street, nobody has come up with a good reason as to why we don't have a flow on the one halfway down the hill or the one down at the treatment plant.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
But those, those are the four, the four that are a major issue right now with low flow, and not having coverage from some other area.
Yeah.
But hopefully we can get maybe two this summer. Off the list.
Um, okay, anything else underwater? Can I have a motion to go out of water and into the sewage commissioner?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Delinquent accounts, we've covered. Uh, the World Street Pump Station service area. The engineers have been down and are looking at an alternate route for the temporary access road, which would go through the Lethbridge property instead of uh coming off of Pleasant, Pleasant Street, which would cut down, which would re would not require the clearing that would originally propose. I have not seen these sketches, nor had I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Lethbridge about it, but uh uh, I should be seeing a sketch showing where they are proposing to put it. And then go back in and see if we can negotiate with Mr. Lethbridge as far as building it. Other than that, uh, we're still in a ghost situation as far as the grant is concerned, and you've got the uh bond issue in place.
Yes.
Uh, however, construction is not going to happen this year because of the bridge on North Street. There's no way you're going to start construction in that area uh with the detour traffic.
Thanks. Anything else under sewage? Their motion to go out of sewage and back into the regular select board meeting?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, review the bills. Any questions or concerns about the list?
Uh, no. Uh, just on the face sheet here, uh a little more than halfway down Zoom, they only charge us $16 for a meeting, Stan?
$15 a month.
A month? Oh, wow, that's, that's a good deal.
We can have as many as we want, Tom.
Wow, that's a good deal, 16 bucks for Zoom time, that's a good deal.
But now we're meeting a person, so we're going to save almost $16 a month.
Holy gosh, what are we going to do with all that? Judy, Judy.
You have purchased a system, you voted to purchase a system, which will allow you to continue to do Zoom meetings while you're sitting here together.
Yes.
Which will save people having to come in uh for a short session.
Yes. Yes, certainly the engineers, you know, save them driving all the way down here, and yes, the state, yep.
Yeah.
Money well spent.
Okay, so any other concerns about the bills or okay to sign off on them?
Yes.
So is there a motion required for the journal entry log? Do you want a motion for that, for the journal entry log this? Okay, so, okay, so we'll just have a motion for um the total of all the invoices with Okay, and everyone has is signing up on them now.
Yeah.
You have a bottom dollar?
78, 422, 44.
But the, the first page isn't a, an adjustment, these are from April. And she has reasons for them, so that, that's not a journal entry adjustment for her?
That seems to be signed by the board. Uh, and there is attachments all the way through it for the various, these are, you know, the corrections to the, the tax or to the bookkeeping system.
Yeah.
Somebody may have coded things wrongly, somebody being me, somebody picked it up and said, you got it wrong. Uh, so there, there's a number of issues in there. Some of it is revenue that comes in that gets put into the general fund, and then it's uh designated for a specific fund. So these, these are the changes that I look at. Celia comes up with, and I look at on a monthly basis. It's, it's not, it's not a bill, this is, it's a posting issue. Yeah.
So let's do that over. So let's have a motion to approve the journal entry log.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we'll have the motion to approve the bills, the invoices, and we'll sign this. And Lisa, did you get those ready, the first, the motion for that one?
Yeah, I have that.
Okay. Okay. Budget report.
Okay, I did make a shot at projecting what I think the end of this fiscal year will come up with. Uh, some of the items were a matter of taking the actual through June 10, dividing by 11 and multiplying times 12. Uh, some of the other ones are ones that I know we're going to be doing between now and then. I think what it, what it comes up with is that you are going to be significantly under budget, both for the general fund and the highway department for this year. So it's not an issue of doing it, uh, of having to script right now. Uh, we can just proceed in, in a normal fashion.
Sure.
Anybody have questions, why give me a call, and I'll be happy to explain how, how I came up with the numbers.
Any questions right now on that?
Looks good.
Alright, zoning administrator.
Erica will be leaving on June 30 as the zoning administrator. The need is to come up with a new administrator. I believe the planning commission had it on its agenda, or at least talked about it. And from what I got from Dick was it had no recommendations at this time for a zoning administrator. Question is, do you want to advertise locally, the website, uh, Facebook uh, for a zoning administrator? Do you want to advertise in the Herald for someone in Rutland County as zoning administrator? You want to just get the word out there that we have a vacancy and see who might be available?
Yeah, I think we've got to advertise.
Yes, I think, uh, you know, start off locally, see what we get, move up from there.
I think so too, and I, but if anybody else has somebody that comes to mind to just pass them along, just in case. Um, we actually, well, of course, we had a new zoning administrator in Rutland we just hired. So I could just even like pick his brain to see if he knows somebody local, because he was local. So, um, but I think we definitely advertise on the website and Rut, Rutland Herald. And then the league. Oh, what?
Yeah, no.
Is everybody good with that, or just start off with our website? Okay, website, Herald, and the league. Grounds maintenance violation.
Included in your packet is a letter that I sent to Vermont Redevelopment LLC, which owns the White Building up on the hill, uh, re, relating to their grass. Uh, I am coming to before you tonight to find that uh they are not in compliance and ask the select board to uh move that they are not in compliance with the ground maintenance ordinance. What I will do is then send a letter, which I've already drafted this morning, and sent to Alan George for review, telling them to immediately clean up, or at least not within the ne, within the next 30 days, or the town will take it on and put a lien on the property. So what I'm looking for is a approval of my finding that they are in violation.
So moved.
Does the ordinance have to allow them 30 days? Oh, it does, from even though they didn't comply in the first place. Because it looks horrible, and in 30 days, it's going to be up to your neck. Okay, alright. So Ben made the motion, and Bruce, did you second it?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I had one other letter that I sent out, and it prompted the lawn to be mowed and the trash to be picked up. So that one was clean. I have another one that went in the mail today. Uh, advising them that they are in, I will be inspecting their property for conformance with the grounds maintenance ordinance. And we'll see what we get for a resuit. Uh, this one, the Vermont Redevelopment, did receive the certified letter, and I've got the note back, so they, they have seen it.
Thank you. Okay, Casella Curbside Rubbish and Recycling Contract, the email that he had sent us from Alan George. And the contract, anybody have any questions?
As Alan noted in his uh review, the big change was in the dollars to do it, uh, which is what they bid. The other were some uh items that he felt needed to be addressed as we went through. So I'm looking for approval of Casella's contract for 10 years at the prices he quoted.
Yeah, definitely.
Anybody have any questions regarding Alan's comments?
No, they seem pretty straightforward, I mean.
Yes, no, I think they're good suggestions.
So everyone's okay with the contract?
Yes.
Their motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And authorizing a And authorizing us to sign it. Second?
With these additions, right?
Yes.
With these changes that he advised?
I'll send these changes over to Casella for their concurrence, which I think they probably will concur.
I'll second the motion. So, but I think the motion would be to, to send the, the um, changes for Casella to agree to, not to approve the contract.
Well, yeah.
Right, we will approve it with the changes, and then we'll send it to Alan, and then once it goes to Casella, they, like you said, they've gotta accept the changes before we get final approval of the contract. So then the motion should be probably just to have Alan make these changes and forward to Casella for review.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, refinish of the floors.
Okay, we uh, had the, the price without the assessors area. I've talked with uh, Don Tredon. Uh, he is looking at sometime the first two weeks in August. So you'll be moving in for your meetings here, and then uh, we'll have to maybe take a meeting someplace else uh, in order to have him done. The big thing is the curing time, uh, when he puts it down. So he's on, he's on board and ready to go.
Good.
So anybody have any questions regarding that?
Nope.
All right. Um, refurbish the second floor, do you wanna just?
Carrie asked me to put refurbish the second floor meeting room and entryway uh, for a thought, thought process to come up in another meeting. The big issue is the ceiling where we have a stand over here on the north side, and a question of just general uh, cleanup and refurbishing. So, your thinking caps on. Uh, the other thing that we did discuss was the pictures, the fire department pictures that are on the wall as to whether that is keeping with the theme of the meeting room. And should there be something else there besides fire department? So that's, that's something for people to think about.
Put your thinking caps on.
You're gonna get us in trouble.
All right, park and rec risk management. Wade came down from the league and um, went to the pond and went to the rink and made some recommendations. They weren't really mandates, he just recommended things. The, um, I'll just speak to the park, um, excuse me, in the rec committee. We um, basically, some of the things were already done, he just didn't see them because he didn't go inside the building. Um, and secondly, most of them were already thoughts in our head as to what we are gonna do and the improvements we're gonna make. So we're pretty much following through, Stan's writing up um, answers to all of those, and we're going to, that will be attached to the minutes of the meeting that night. And the rink, I just wanted to mention, they want to have a potluck dinner on July first um, over at the rink, and it's gonna be six um, oh, five to seven, I think. And then um, the next day will be the grand opening, and they plan to be open from six to ten for roller skating. And they've already got, I think, a hundred and forty-five pairs in-house.
Excellent. If you look at the specific listing, uh, the, the report that was included, uh, the first one was for Beaver Pond, and Wednesday night, the Beaver Pond committee will be looking at a application form for special events, specifically if it relates to having a fishing derby type thing. And the important thing is to get the signature of a parent on a piece of paper that shows what the liability or lack of liability are. So there we talking about that Wednesday night, but I'm sure that it will mock what Judy said about uh, the registration form for both the park, for both the pool and the rink. Uh, to get a registration form, it's not gonna be the pool pass that we had in the past, but it's gonna be more detailed and have the limited liability on it and signed by an adult. Uh, so that was uh, the discussion there. The, uh, the repair of the surface, yes. John has talked with Brian, and they're gonna cut out the sections where uh, it was damaged when the tree came down onto the skating surface last year. So they're gonna cut squares out and repatch them all and then quote those. So item number two is yes, those will be taken care of. Uh, number three was signage and rules. There are rules for the skate, for the ice rink, which are posted inside the building. The committee is looking at revising the rules, and we have a manual from the league that makes suggestion that what we should have for a roller skating rink. So they are in the process of coming up with those, and hopefully they will be on your desk for review. The barricade between the rink to skating surface and the parking lot, essentially, I believe what this is to stop anybody from driving up the ramp onto the, onto the rink surface. Uh, and there were a number of suggestions that were brought up during the meeting. Uh, ballards, a, a fence of some type to uh, not only discourage people from driving up there, but to uh, keep them from driving up there. So that one is in the mail uh, right now.
Thought there was a chain across that.
Question is whether a chain would stop a car if he decided he wanted drive onto the surface, or if his brakes didn't work. So it's something a little bit more than just a chain. The chain is what's there now, yep.
The chain that goes across the entrance to the rink is gonna stay as is, I believe. What they were looking at is the hill that goes to the parking lot up to the rink, although it sounds crazy that somebody would actually drive up there to go onto the rink. We figured if we just put, um, you know, rail fencing, post every few feet, and then rail, that's enough. So they couldn't get through the post and up over there.
Uh, the other one is the surface in good condition and a regular inspection. Uh, so a program to inspect it on a weekly basis to be sure that we don't have cracks in the surface that need to be taken care of. That's a uh, uh, operational uh, item to add on to the job description for the manager. Uh, no ramps or other features. We're not providing any ramps or other features, and we're not gonna allow anyone to bring their own in. And the other item is the safety protocol. And whether it is going to be recommended, or whether it is going to be mandated, there were considerable discussions regarding that item. The guidance that I have from the league on their manual talks about recommending. And again, everything on this list is recommended. Uh, what we're trying to do is a, a good faith effort to meet these essence of what has been recommended. Uh, the last item was again Beaver Pond, and there was a stake in the water which has been pulled out, so that one is done, taken care of. What I'm putting together is, is a response to this, in writing back from Wade saying, these are what we are doing uh, on these various items. Because he has a January third uh, date for response. Uh, so you'll have an opportunity to see it uh, at your twenty-eighth meeting.
Judy, uh, that's roller skating, not skateboarding, right?
Right, roller skates.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're basically, when we discussed it, when he talked about, you know, protective gear, we are not providing that. We will recommend it that, you know, if young children are coming, then they can wear knee pads, elbow pads, helmets. You know, we strongly suggest it, but we can't provide.
Good. One item which is not on the list but was discussed was uh, the rules that anyone under the age of ten had to have an adult supervision. Now, the adult could be a, you know, either a parent or an older sibling, but needed to have adult supervision on site. Both pool and roof.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, in your packet, you had the engagement letter from Sullivan Powers and Company for audit services. Um, is there any questions or concerns or a motion to approve and allow signature?
This is a six hundred dollar increase over last year's fee.
We need to negotiate with them a little bit.
Well, I didn't pick up on that.
Uh, I, I, this was a COVID year, uh, we didn't spend the kind of money we normally do, uh, I, I don't think they need a six hundred dollar increase.
Well, this is to perform the audit, not necessarily reflect on pluses or minuses and expenditures, they've gotta go through the same procedures.
Yeah.
It's the same, it's the same contract that we've had past years, it's just that they've increased eight hundred dollars on.
Eight hundred, okay.
Six hundred.
Six hundred, all right. That's a big jump.
Total is seventeen thousand four hundred. Last year was sixty thousand three hundred. And they overran, but did not overcharge us last year.
I mean, can we put it out to bid, if we're?
Well.
It went out for consults probably eight or nine years ago, maybe ten years ago. And Solomon and Powers was selected at that time. It has not been uh, contested or gone out for bids uh, since they were on board. Uh, if you talk with some people, uh, they've suggested you change auditors, change auditors every five years, so you get a different approach on it necessarily. Uh, kind of eliminate the existing one and then go out with proposals for a, a firm to take over. I don't think you, we're, we're in the process now where it's too late to do that for the current audit year. But if something that you would like to talk about, it would be something to come up uh, when you start doing budgeting uh, in the fall.
Yeah, it's, it's not cheap. The mosquito district, I think, where, that was questioning, they were gonna have an audit, and it was, you know, eight, eight or nine thousand dollars, somewhere between seven and, and eight thousand dollars.
Total or increase?
No, total, so I I, I don't think this is probably too bad, but it's not a bad idea to, to look around for the following year.
I won't tell you what we spent.
Judy, proportionately, is it uh, in the ballpark?
I, I mean, we're, the city's much bigger and ours is much greater. Um, I'm trying to think it off the top of my head. Looking at this, this is like, what, a little over three percent increase?
Yeah. And that's.
I mean, if you look at it that way, I guess, but, but you're right. It's like, if, if we're spending over fifteen thousand, maybe we should eventually get an RFP, so there might be somebody willing to come in at, you know, less, I don't know. But it is, it's only like a three, little over three percent.
I mean, I can't disagree with Stan that when it comes to something like an audit, it would make sense every five years or so to go with a different group who's gonna be looking, because, I mean, every auditor looks at certain things. I mean, there, there's always kind of the pet areas that they look at, so. I, I would move to approve this, but also note for when we go out to budget, that we should look for, you know, some bids, just to kind of put it out there.
I agree.
I agree.
So is there a motion to approve this agreement?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, ARPA projects.
We talked about some of it the last meeting. The slug removal and whining, the lagoons is probably somewhere in the half a million dollar range. So it's kind of over the top as far as your hundred and sixty thousand allocation.
Yeah.
That's gonna take a special effort to go through that. Uh, you talked about highway department equipment, and I don't know if sure whether it qualifies, but uh, talking with John, there are tractors and implements that need to be replaced, and he would be more than happy to have some extra money to do that. Uh, estimated maybe in the fifty thousand range to buy new equipment. The other one is serious recommendation for uh, digitizing the town records. A number of towns have done it. Not only does it give you a backup, uh, because you still have to keep the original, but it allows the attorneys and the realtor to come in online and look at the deeds and do their title searches uh, from the digitized. Uh, the estimated cost, uh, ten years ago was ten thousand, and right now, she is getting a price, but she figures it's gonna be at least twice that to get it done. She's asking for proposals to do it. I think this is a worthwhile project. Some towns did it uh, under the previous stimulus grant, and so I think it probably will qualify under this one. Those are the three that, that have come to the top of my mind. Uh, there may be some equipment for the sewer department, but uh, nothing extensive. So it's open game. I think one of the questions that came up, uh, talking with Carrie was whether a economic development uh, grant which might assist the Marvel Museum is something that would fit in the mix, but we haven't uh, explored it any further than that.
So, um, I think that, uh, Lisa, go ahead.
Don't you have till twenty twenty-four to spend this money?
Yes.
Okay, so you have a little bit of time.
We have time to spend it, but we, we need to make a decision on what we're spending it for.
Is that what it says when you read through it?
Within a year's time, yeah. There's a deadline for deciding what you're gonna use it for, and then the, another deadline for when you have to actually spend it. And it could even be twenty twenty-three to decide, but, because it's coming, well, like, we probably, I don't know who we are, but like, the city's getting it in two increments, half this year, half next year. But I agree, I do have to agree with Celia, I think digitizing our records is huge. Um, just because I know of people who do title searches, and it's a nightmare sometime, and um, having access electronically is, is big, and it's only gonna get worse as time goes on, so I think it's something to invest in. Um, I personally would still like to see something go to our sewage, because we have so many issues there. I know it's not a lot of money, but it's a, it helps.
I, I would agree. I think, I mean, I think take this opportunity to digitize, there's no toys about that. And we can probably just get it done, but I, I think at least substantial, I mean, we're gonna have to make major upgrades to the sewer no matter what, so let's take the money and, and use it for that.
Yeah, even if we could get one uh, lagoon, the sludge taken out of it, the, you know, if we, if we get the money and it's gotta be done in a certain timeframe, let's see how much, you know, everything and at least do one.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
Part in the fire trucks.
Must be the sixth grade graduation coming by.
It is. Hopefully there's not a fire here.
Right.
But now I, I kind of agree too. I mean, I know if, if it's a half a million and, and we could still take 100,000 off of that. That'd still help.
Yeah. We get the sludge out of one lagoon would be a one less we got to do.
What's anybody else think?
I agree with taking a, a piece of it for digitizing the records and the rest of the lagoon.
All right. Do you need a motion?
And, and wouldn't you purchase a computer also to have in Celia's office so that you could have people access the records while they're there without actually taking them out?
Right. I would think that that would be part of it because I know like we have two different terminals. So you can just go in and look up property online and then you could just print the documents from that computer. Yeah. Lot better than looking through those files. Okay. 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 All right. Okay. All right, town manager search, still searching. I believe Carrie emailed me today and she said she got some more resumes that she was going to forward me tomorrow. So I haven't seen any of those. The first two, there's two other candidates prior to that and that was it. So I'm hoping there's some good candidates here, so. Soon as we review, we'll share them all with you. Anything else you have questions on for that?
Judy, did, did she tell you how many resumes you were going to get?
Then she just said, I got some more resumes through email and she's like, I'll forward them out to you tomorrow. Meeting tomorrow. Yeah. And the other two we had were, you know, very strong, but not for Tom and Andrew, one very overquali, overly qualified and one very underqualified. And neither within a thousand mile radius. All right. Sheriff's Department report, any questions?
I think the only question that we're all going to get in the next couple of days is as schools go and the break-ins that happened over the weekend. So Stan, if you could just, if you could just share with the sheriff's department that we, I mean, I've gotten a couple of comments, I'm sure all of you have about the break-ins that happened over the weekend and, you know, that if they can step up patrol just a little bit in the late evenings, it seems, I mean, if we go by the pattern, it seems during the weekend, that would be great.
I'll pass the word, I, I was not aware that there were break-ins. I edited this thing, but I didn't read it.
Yeah. Well, no, I'm sorry, it's not in the sheriff's report, anecdote stuff that I've heard around town.
It's, it's on the Facebook page there, rocking parents, some of the others.
But it's probably hours that they don't have anybody on anyway, you know, it might be after midnight and I don't think they, we don't very often see anything much after midnight.
I think I did send around the schedule for the last two weeks. I haven't received one for the current two weeks. But I, if I see it, I'll pass it on, but the, the lack of coverage on the early morning, they had more of it in the evenings than they did in the daytime.
But, but I think my point is, is that school is over and so a good time now for them to be going around would be from, you know, 10:00 PM to 3 o'clock in the morning because we're not worried about kids, you know, headed to school or walking home from school as much. And what we're seeing, at least this weekend, is a rash of break-ins that, from what I understand, happened from about 10:00 PM until 7:00 AM.
But I don't believe they have anybody on after like midnight or maybe 1:00 in the morning.
Yeah, the sheriffs don't go 24 hours.
Anymore than the state police does.
Right, and the state police don't either. But at least they have a dispatch that you can go through. But we, and we're, we'll probably have this at the next meeting regarding the dog ordinance or the dog. Help me out here, Tom. The animal control officer. So we did meet with the sheriff in West Rutland, which I'll put on the next meeting agenda. But while we were there, they stressed about all the break-ins in West Rutland. So I think the important thing is stressing to people to lock your cars. You know, at least you lock your cars, they break your window, hopefully your insurance cover it and stuff. But definitely to try to take as much precaution as you can. And it doesn't sound like it's isolated in any area of town. Sounds like they're hitting every street they possibly can.
Yeah.
Please don't leave your pocketbooks and wallets laying on the seats, you know?
Yeah, money, money left in vehicles, that's not a good.
I don't have any money, but I have left my keys in my car before.
Yeah.
In case somebody wants to borrow it.
It is a good for Riley. Lisa?
So I think it's important that the sheriff is submitting the, a schedule to Stan because I know this morning the school called and we were told between eight and nine, there was no one on until noon and directed us to the state police. So I'm curious if they're not on in the E, in the early morning hours and there was no one on from eight till noon. I mean, are we saying from noon to what, that, that's our coverage? It, it's just a little concerning, I think.
He actually just handed me the schedule, so they have it like week one, week two, and they rotate. So week one after comes week three and so forth. So like Monday was like.
Well, I don't think you should tell us what the schedule is. I, I don't think that should be public knowledge probably. But I, I just think it's odd that, I, I don't know, it seems like I hear when people call, no one's on.
Yeah, they look pretty consistent with their hours in terms of how they do it. And they vary, you know, so it's not the same time every day, so. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, have the majority of these break-ins been late, late evening, do people know?
So from what I understand over what happened Friday into Saturday, it was like 7:00 PM to, I'm sorry, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
Oh, oh, wow, okay. That's why I go out of town on weekends. All right, I think as much as we can get the word out there that this is happening. I mean, I know a lot of people are on those pages and see it, but then like others may never hear about that. So if we can stress, you know, just really try to, you know, secure your vehicle as much as possible. A lot of those people now, they say are using, what is it, doorbell? The security system?
Yep.
Oh, ring.
It's called Ring, yeah.
All right. So that captures people all around the yard, so a lot of people are doing that, they said. Any other questions, concerns? Older, new business?
All should adjourn.
Bruce, you're first. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.